Good evening. You're now viewing the Scottsville Town Council meeting for Monday, December 20th, 2021. My name is Matt Lawless. I'm Scottsville's Town Administrator. This meeting is being held pursuant to Virginia Open Meeting Laws and Freedom of Information Act, as well as the Town of Scottsville's ordinance on the continuity of government during the COVID-19 emergency. As a result, you'll see town council members participating both in person in this meeting and remotely on the town's Zoom platform. We also have several opportunities for the public to participate, both in person here at the town office, 401 Valley Street, online through Zoom, and over the telephone, making it convenient. We also record this meeting and post it on the town's YouTube account for future access. So if you're viewing us in the future, thank you. We're still assembling our forum and setting our meeting up here. The local time is four minutes until seven o'clock on Monday, the 20th. So if you'd like to skip ahead on your video, four minutes, you'll see us come to order then. Thank you very much.
...
That's the town clerk to call the roll, please.
Yeah.
Councilman Munson?
Yeah.
Councilman Payne?
Yeah.
We know our district councilor Bullock and Grisco, we can use that for... Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Bullock.
Well, look, he's here, and Council Vice Mayor Grisco is on an airplane headed for Hawaii.
Zach, can you tell us where you are? You are calling in from home, presumably? And, uh, Councilman Bullock is here with us from home as well.
Okay, that sounds good. So the item number two on our agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda, the consent calendar approval of the agenda. Financial report for November of 2021, past minute meeting, meeting minutes for November 8th work session and November 15th.
I'm in Buffalo, New York. Can you hear that?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I've got a little bit of lag.
The town administrator contract amendment, as you may recall, we are shifting some of our town employees' salaries up a little bit. We approved this, this move back last month, I believe it was. Appointment of John Rett to Architectural Review Board as Consulting Architect and Continuity, Continuity of Government Ordinance Extension. Is there a motion that we accept the consent calendar as presented?
I mean, you accept the consent calendar as presented?
Is there a second? And all in favor?
Aye.
Item number three on the agenda tonight was to have been a public service recognition, recognition. We had planned on honoring our, some of our police officers or our past chief, some other officers, with a little ceremony here tonight, but our past chief has a bad back and isn't able to attend. So we're going to reschedule this after the first of the year when Chief Jenkins is in the hot seat. Item four is a public forum. If there's, we have three little public hearings tonight, which you certainly are welcome to speak at any or all of those. If you have anything other than those that you wish to discuss at this point, the podium is yours for the next three minutes. Seeing, seeing none one, no one come forward to speak at the public forum, and with the vice mayor being on an airplane somewhere, the mayor's report, not a whole lot to add to what I gave you at the work session, only the couple of important things. And last Thursday, Matt and I, Greg Jenkins, Gary, our interim chief, chief and first sergeant from El Barra County, and the spouses of Greg and Gary all met at John Zook's office for courts. And incoming chief Greg Jenkins took his oath of office. So he is up and ready to go January 1st, and we swore in Gary as a patrol officer for the town so he can work, continue to work on the policy updates and other paperwork that he's been trying to get in order. And he will be working for our new chief, Greg Jenkins. So that all took place on Thursday morning, and then Matt and I went to Mr. Bowling's office, where I signed some papers to finalize the closing on the property, the wetlands property at the south end of the plant property that we were able to purchase from Dr. Hurt with the grant from the Virginia Outdoors Foundation. So that is ours now. So that was in the last week, and that is all I need to add to my previous report. Any questions? Item six is reports of our charter committees, and I'll start on the end and see if Mr. Payne has anything on government services right now.
We met way into the, my first meeting on the committee, I went to meet the other committees. And the most of the discussions about, uh, budget process and how to approach that in the future. You have a state competitive of, uh, with salaries, benefits, et cetera, for our municipal employees. And a very good discussion on Scottsville and the greater Scottsville area, how much we depend on each other. And that was a, uh, a small discussion. We have not, uh, I can say that we have nothing forward to the council.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Payne? Move on to Mr. Munson, economic development, or anything else?
Yeah, we have been actively moving forward with a small business development project that's on the state. The idea is, don't we partner with the community investment collaborative, collaborative in Charlotteville. They will be providing a six-week online course to help applicants develop a business plan. At the end of that six-week period, and we have a panel of successful Scottsville entrepreneurs that you will pick one or more of them to receive up to $10,000 grant to get their business started. The only requirement is that you need to start the business in a vacant Scottsville storefront, either uptown or downtown. So if you know anyone that's interested in opening a business in Scottsville, have them contact me. It can be more organization, but the objective here is to help entrepreneurs succeed in businesses in Scottsville, both in terms of helping them develop a business plan and to get them to succeed cash. So those classes I'm going to start in March will be awarding money by the end of April. And hopefully, you'll see some of these businesses open in time for the spring and summer.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Mr. Munson? Ms. Hines, anything ongoing with events, travel, tourism, anything like that?
Um, nothing yet. We haven't started meeting. I have been in contact with a number of folks who are interested in being on the committee. I met with Laura Malusi and kind of got a very detailed rundown of timelines and, and, you know, how to break down of things. So we are looking to have our first meeting, first weekend, or second week in January.
Great.
And if anybody is interested, send me an email.
And you can always use more physical bodies on your committee. Yes, okay. Mr. Bullock, do you have anything on ARB?
I'm saying, if I, he was low bandwidth and dropped off just a moment ago.
Okay. Okay, if he comes back, we'll certainly provide him the opportunity to speak. Okay, we don't have a report from Planning Commission. They did not meet in D. Some, you know, this month, did they?
No, they will have new business on January, and they, their meeting does delay one day because of the New Year's holiday.
Okay.
So I mean, on Tuesday, it's the fourth.
Okay, and then our meeting in January will be delayed one day too because of Martin Luther King Day. So we'll be on the third Tuesday, I suppose, instead of the third Monday.
Yes, sir. You have one action item on this agenda related to that.
Okay, good. Mr. Bullock, you got anything for us on ARB? Hello?
I do, and I think my hotspot now is working. So thank you. Four things in the ARB. The first one, COA. On 385 Harrison Street, we decided to move forward with a solid stain on that fence. And we've, we'll be moving that to our January meeting. In the interest of flexibility, we would, we were willing to meet earlier with the property owner to discuss paint options, but we haven't heard anything back. So that'll be our business in January. The second we're working on outreach will be sending out a letter to realtors as well as prominent contractors in the area. So the people who move into town and those who are doing work in town know that they have to go through the COA process before beginning work. We have a pamphlet that we have drafted that we sent out before, but we'll be sending out again the coming month. We're also looking to fill a vacancy on our board. We have, we have two. One nomination that we're putting forward this evening, and we're still looking for another, which would be a town resident to fill our current vacancy, which we're hoping to have filled by February. The other item this evening is to put forward John Rett, who interviewed for the other vacancy that we'd like to move forward being. He is an architect and having a licensed architect government designation, as well as how to design and preservation of historic buildings.
Okay, Mr. Rett was included in our consent calendar, which passed. So he is a member of your board.
Thank you.
Good. Any questions for Mr. Bullock? And we'll get into the first of our three public hearings this, this evening. The first one is zoning map amendment for 153 James River Road. And I will, I'm going to open the public hearing and then ask Mr. Lawless to give us a little brief rundown on it, and then we'll open it to the public comment. Okay, so the public hearing on 153 James River Road is now officially open. Mr. Lawless.
Thank you, sir. The parcel of question is number one by three, James River Road at the corner of James River Road and Route 20. I did, it's one large printout there. It's this parcel thrown on the screen. The site is bounded by commercial properties on one side and residential property on the other. And the town's future land use plan is shown as all appropriate for commercial development. However, it currently carries split zoning that the, the smaller portion showing in the white outline there still carries a village residential designation from before the property was acquired by its current single owner. James River Road LLC proposes a tiger fuels market, convenience store, gas station, and car wash. The special use permits for that use were approved at this meeting right about a year ago, but they didn't have control of the entire site at that time, and the whole zoning from a path residential use was split. So they, they've now completed a partial boundary line adjustment. This image shows the whole parcel, how it's combined together, and it says four halves of an acre in question here to see. The applicant proposes to unify the zoning with commercials throughout. They're also requesting a waiver from one provision of the zoning related to the tax property wise, which they also want the adjacent parcels looking for a waiver of buffering and screening on that so that they can criticize on that. I would invite the other thing to say just a few more words about all the stuff introduced beyond the question and lead up to the site.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, Town Council. My name is Kelsey Schwan. I'm a planner with ship engineering. I'm here tonight representing James River Road LLC, the owner of the property. So just to provide a little bit more background information, so as Matt said, we were before you approximately a year ago, where an approval was granted for a drive-through window and a car wash use. The gas station you should sell is by right in the commercial district. At that time, the eight acres, which is below south of the property there, and then extends up, which formerly extended up to a narrow pipe stem fronting along Valley Street and at the corner of James River Road. So the .427 that you see there and the property to the south is all one unified property. And when we came before you a year ago, that property was not for sale, and it was, so it was, it was not part of our application. Since the time where we brought the previous special permanent application before you, we were working on a site plan, and that property became available. And so my client purchased that, and it, since it's right at the corner there, that's where they pursued a boundary line adjustment, and where, that's where we are, where before you tonight, where this additional property came online right back to the original property. It's the .4 acres. And so the request is to rezone just that .4 acre portion from residential to commercial. As Matt said, the, the corner, really that whole block there is called out in the future land use, not as commercial. So we feel this rezoning request is, is consistent with, with what's called form of comprehensive plan. Previous discussions, we, with the planning commission, we've had a good bit of discussion about screening. And I, I think these are all things we've, we've, at this point, have put together a fairly detailed landscape plan in the rezoning phase, but it's something that we'll go into much further detail with the ARB. This property is subject to ARB review, so signage, lighting, landscaping, all of that will be discussed with the, with Architectural Review Board. And Matt scrolled through, but if you can go back just two slides, I think just calling attention to the sign precedent is helpful. We, we did talk about the sign, signage and lighting in, in pretty good detail with the planning commission. And so we just took a, an image precedent from the mill, the market at Mill Creek location. The sign at this location would likely be very similar with landscaping around it, fairly limited lighting. And we oriented the sign at this preliminary phase, and again, we'll, we'll get this in more detail with ARB, so that the narrow side faces the residences across Valley Street, so that the, it's not the long facade, the illuminated portion that's faced, facing those residences across the street. One more item that I want to touch on is the waiver that we're requesting along the rear property line. There's a provision in your zoning ordinance that there can be no grading within 20, within 20 feet of a residential, adjacent residential boundary. And so the property to the south is still residential, but it's all, it's under common ownership. We would like to grade in that area, but we are proposing a robust replanting of, of the landscape. So it's not a, it's not a request to forego screening or buffering. It's a request so that we can disturb in that area, grade in that area, and then we'll replant it at site plan. And that's, that's all that I have for you, but I'm happy to come up and answer any questions that come up during the public hearing.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay, since the public hearing is now is open, anyone who wishes to comment on this particular item on the agenda is welcome to step forward and state your name and speak for a few minutes. Let's keep it as brief as possible. But we have a small crowd and not a really hot item on the agenda, so let's, you know, just be civil about it. Anyone want to step forward?
Well, I heard a real good discussion last week at the, the town council work session about that. And I agree with most of the ones said last week. Well, first off, I, I like that, I love, I think the appearance of the town and entrance corridor is, is prime here and really important. We have an attractive town, especially this time of year, and I really think that commercial, any kind of commercial should be away from the corridor. And, and I remember I was on the planning commissioner, involved in the planning commission when they were trying to make sure that the, the car dealer in the dollar store looked appropriate, and that was tough too. And they're a lot better now, they're maintained a lot better. But I think both are in the wrong place, but much better maintained now. But basically, I, I like, I would like to see the commercial areas separate from homes and separate from the corridors. So it can't even be hardly visible from Route 20. And I like to keep it, keep the car wash away from the entrance corridor and distant from the homes. Because we are a small historic building, and I think we should preserve that look. When people come to town, the first thing they see is the commercial areas, and I think they should see trees and, and nature and kind of a nice hill. And I think the car wash is fine where it was originally planned, so I'd like to deny that, I guess, or keep that the way it was planned.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hyson. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Sateo, and I would like to take you directly across from this proposed building. And I'm going to basically just do, you know, not on principle, but on practicality. Very busy intersection, and I personally will be impacted daily and in the evening with the movement of the sun. But it doesn't really bother me, and in my opinion, the tiger fuel is bringing to the town far outweighs any annoyance I will have with anything you're doing over there. So I do agree with Phil on the entrance corridor. And it should reflect a small town, but the original entrance corridor to the town is by mistake, so we have. So with that, I am not opposed to this changing. Thank you.
Thank you.
At the work session last week, there was a discussion as to whether or not the proposal should be for the approved project to shift over to its 20. And again, at all planning meetings, more than once, it has been presented that if you rezone that residential, it will shift anywhere from 38 to 42 feet over. So to me, the whole question is whether or not tiger fuel is great for the town. The idea is we already approved that. The real question is whether or not we want to approve that whole thing shifting over and being on the edge of the property. The other thing that was discussed, where you think about the trees. And it sounds like, just like we were talking about denim, and just like we're talking about hurt. Conversation wants to swirl out about trails, not about homeowners association and different things. And at the work session, you kind of spoiled out that, about trees. And it was suggested that if you rezone the whole thing commercial, you could save the trees. The one thing about the ordinance that's put on the wall and didn't get pointed out was that it's only if it doesn't impede the improvements. I don't know, we'll get the town attorney to suggest what that means. But to me, if I got a 40-foot tree and I can't see my building, that impedes my improvement. Once you rezone it from commercial, you lose all that control because now the whole thing is commercial. And what's, again, what the town attorney kept pointing out is it has to be, the requests have to be reasonable. We don't determine, you don't determine, Architecture New Board doesn't determine what's reasonable. There, there's a debate because of the judge. And it's going to be really hard to explain to the judge that you agreed to rezone it, and by that new zoning, you have every right to go all the way up to the edge of their property. And by that new rezoning. And by that new rezoning, we have every right to do what they want to those trees. And I don't think it's, I can't imagine, and I'm trying to continue this thinking, only the judge can make the decision that whether or not we want forty-foot tree there will be deemed reasonable. I know the ARB has control over the landscaping plan. Is that after that block has been cleared and the improvements have been put in? Do we have picnic benches and things going over there? We had a plan that approved that was here. And now if you change it from residential, from residential to commercial, it has already been suggested twice in the name that it will be over here. And I think that's what you really have to pay attention to, the trees. As important as it may or may not be, the hiking trails, as important as it may or may not be. Isn't it a huge size company that's going to build? Your decision whether or not to rezone it from residential to commercial is what's going to decide when it moves over.
Thank you, Matt. Anyone else? Will Shumps representative like to rebut any of those comments?
So I think what, I mean, what I'll say about the landscaping and trees is that Tiger Fuel has a few markets around town. So if you can, you can drive past them, you can see the quality that they hold themselves to. You can see the robust landscaping that they put in. They've worked with Alamo County entrance corridor and have implemented gas stations that are successful, that are beautiful and that are welcome assets in the community. This is something that Tiger Fuel was willing and committed to working with you on is to ensure that the entrance corridor coming into town. That's a very critical corner. Is welcoming, is inviting and puts out a message, you know, visually that you all are proud of as a town. Just as far as the, I, I think that we've been very, very transparent with the whole reason that we wanted to rezone is to shift the site. It's designated, that entire block is designated as commercial in the future land use map. I think there's somewhat of an expectation there that, that it makes sense for that, that intersection and that block to be commercial. If, I will say that regardless of whether or not it's, if it is, remains residential, they do own that property and they can clear the trees on the residential property as well. So in this, in this is, in this instance, rezoning it commercial, we'll have a site plan for the entire site. We'll have a landscape plan for the entire site. It's something that you can look at holistically for the entire corner and street drainage there. Give you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak that has not spoken? Public hearing is closed. Matter is now in the hands of the council. Council, it's open for your discussion.
What could that stretch at point four acres to use for? It's a driveway and it's not a square. It's a long, almost rectangular. So it's about fifty, is that amazing?
And it can't be used for a driveway for Tiger Fuel because we've already told you that had to be so many feet away from Route 20, the entrance to their property for this business.
And again, it is no longer any different personal. They've done the personal map adjustments already. And that's now a continued piece of land all the way. So we have split parcel zoning on it because of the old parcel line. But it's no longer any different piece of land.
I think as Mr. Bowling pointed out last week, the town has a lot more control over what the entrance corridor looks like. If that is commercial property than with residential property, as he mentioned, if it's residential, the owner can go out in the middle of the night, cut all the trees down and say, I don't know what happened. If it's commercial, he's got to jump through some hoops before he can do anything with trees. And just because there's been one version of a change in the site plan, the site plan still has to get approved. So it doesn't mean that because we rezone that commercial, so the whole block of land will be commercial, that it's, that site plan that was presented as an alternative to the initial site plan is going to get approved. It's got to get approved, so.
So there are stints and this would extend the site plan.
Yeah.
Possibly, what would we say, thirty-eight, forty?
Yeah, if they come in and say, well, we want to move it thirty feet closer, we can say, no, fifteen feet is it. You know, or leave it as like it is or twenty feet, you know? Just because the owner wouldn't like to move the building fifty feet closer to the road, doesn't mean it's going to happen.
But still, if that wasn't happening, they would still be within the limits away from residences.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Can you describe, is this site concept that we're looking at the concept for it being rezoned commercial or the current concept with it being zoned residential on the front of there?
One of the pages shows this kind of ghost image of the ship. So we can take the thirty-two foot ship closer to the new line. So that's the before and after comparing what council saw a year ago at Special Use Summit to what was impossible with this rezoning.
I see.
So the sign becomes eligible to be placed where it wouldn't be before. And the canopy for the gas station moves thirty-two feet closer to the line. It's still, I'm not sure what this distance is from the gas station to the house. Hundred and fifty feet. They give an explanation at the, one planning commission needs. The shift creates more space at the backside of the lot for potentially another commercial use. This is a more useful commercial space at the other side of the local special.
Yeah, I just, I just like to comment that we've really got two things in front of us tonight. Can you all hear me okay? I think my connection's all right.
Yes, why is that?
Okay, thanks. You know, we got two things. We got a site plan, which has been mentioned as to be approved by the ARB, another body. And we also have a zoning question. And I know that with previous zoning things that have come before us, we've been interested in cleaning up our zoning. And so in terms of zoning this small parcel commercial, that feels consistent with me in terms of how we have addressed other parcels that have had sort of mixed zoning or zoning that's been out of keeping with our desired use for an area. And I'm also interested in the zoning that'll give the town the most control over this particular property. That sounds like from our previous discussion with Mr. Bowling, as Ron mentioned, would be to zone a commercial. I do want to express some, some significant misgivings about the revised site plan though. Because it's not just the moving over of those gas pumps thirty-two feet, but the whole, the whole driveway is moved over. And I want to do everything we can to preserve the existing trees as much as possible. There are really important screening for the properties across the street. They're an important piece of how the town looks when we come into town. I don't, I've seen a number of Tiger Fuels around town. I don't know any of them that have such dense screening as those trees currently provide at that corner. And so I'm okay with the zoning because it sounds like it gives us control over the site and it sounds like it makes it consistent with how we've done zoning around town. But the site plan I have some significant misgivings about.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, my, my background's in business, so I kind of look at this from a business perspective. And if I was Tiger Fuel, I would want to optimize the visibility of my business. I agree with Mr. Heisen. I think it's really important to try and keep as much green light as we can trying to handle the town. What, how long we receive. We're going for the on the bend in James, which is a natural feature. So, so keeping as much of this green light in where it can is really important. So if I was Tiger Fuel and I didn't, didn't, and this was remain residential, my creation would be to cut out as much as possible so that I would optimize what people see of this from the street and optimize on the people coming. We lose, my understanding is we lose influence over what happens to that if we do not rezonate. Sort of reason that new site plan is going to have to be submitted and approved. And in that process, we have some influence over what the landscaping is there. If we do not rezonate this, they'd be clear about it. And I would be inclined to do that if I was them, because it would optimize my, my business. Getting a little bit, a little bit farther ahead of myself, I like the idea of moving the site plan over a little bit if it provides more space for another business to go in. I think we do more businesses in town. And if you can get another one in there squeezed in between structural steel and this site, that would be a advantage to the. But all of that we can negotiate when we look at the new site plan. That's where we have it. So to me, it makes sense to rezone this for the reason that it gives us the most influence over what happens in that. And I kind of fear the worst if we don't.
Any other comments from council? And I would entertain a motion to either approve or deny this request for the zoning map amendment.
I need that we approve this request.
Is there a second?
I second.
And is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will ask clerk to call the roll.
Sir.
Yes.
I'm sorry, because I skipped you there. You're on you.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes. Captain.
Yes.
Thank you all very much for what you've carried forward.
Okay, our second public hearing is on the zoning text amendment for the floodplain ordinance. I will open the public hearing as the last one and then ask Mr. Wallace to give us a brief summary. And then we'll open it to comments from the public. So the public hearing is open.
The document for you, the longer attachment package is fully copied the model floodplain ordinance promoted by the State Department of Conservation and Recreation in consultation with the Federal Emergency Management Administration in 2017. The town's previous floodplain ordinance dates back to 2014 and has not been substantially amended since then. The FED and state agencies shared this model ordinance update back then. But the county did not immediately follow up on that. Many localities in the state have done so. In particular, some of the historic districts that I look to as models in the state, larger places like Alexandria, Winchester, down to smaller towns like Athletics and Fondo follow this one. I think there's some general value and consistency across the state so that property owners and staff can compare notes that administer this consistently. But I also think the model ordinance provides some real sound improvements over what the town has on books now. There are a couple of clear standards that might draw your attention to them as well. Definitions of things like floodway, flood plain, flood hazard area, those are unchanged and have been pretty straightforward in federal law for decades. But in this model, we have a few clearer standards around some of the guidance for new construction. And in my role as your floodplain administrator, that helps me clearly explain this to property owners who are thinking about working on their house. And maybe if they're new to the town and don't know our flood history, don't think about what happens when a concrete fills up with water and gets a lot bigger, or what happens when the danger arises and is twenty-three feet deep and stuff like that. So a couple of the primary standards that I sort of walked through on a baseline. On page eleven, what is a floodway? That's the core channel that turns into a fast-moving column of water when it floods. And you've seen that on concrete where you don't want to stand in it because it's going to move. Or the middle of the James River where it can push a house away. So there are no improvements in that area unless they are engineered and certified state that they can stand up and that they're not going to push that floodwater anywhere else. That's a very difficult standard to meet. And only the smallest of helpful landscaping projects will satisfy that. That you, you cannot put your house there because you can't build it in such a way that the whole force of the river isn't going to push it. So we do not build in the floodway. And those are the most urgent enforcement actions that I'll take as floodplain administrator. But if something unsafe goes in that floodway, we need to get it gone because it will break loose and go downstream. So that's a very clear and important thing. New construction, there's more flexibility. And the basic idea when you're building near the floodway, a little bit further away, it's the area that sometimes takes water, but it's not fast-moving. It sits and holds still. You can build around. And when you do that, the floor of your house, this level needs to be above the one percent formerly called a hundred-year flood rate chance. This is a good example of my, my bed might be here. And this bed is above the hundred-year flood. So I'm safe. This water will go under my house. So my crawl space needs to be hollow, preventing so that that water can pass through. It's not going to take my house up and push it somewhere else. If I'm in a mobile home, if you're not anchored on a special foundation, it has to be strapped gap. So there are construction standards, page fifteen, that this building be bolted gap. This doesn't happen very often because it's difficult and expensive to do. But on fifteen point B, manufactured homes anchored to prevent flotation collapse or out of. That's the thing that happens when the river pushes on a mobile home. FEMA doesn't encourage mobile home parks and floodplains. So the regulations are pretty strict about what's put there closer to the river. Lastly, page eighteen, accessory structures. We think a little bit differently about the kind of garden shed, tool shed, greenhouse that you might put in your backyard down a little bit closer to the creek. So those can be done, but they fill into the inspectors. You absolutely cannot leave in there. They have to be small, only for limited storage. And you still have to build it to provide minimal assistance and obstruction to that level there. So before we get that building permit, we look at that. This is important because I'm not the building inspector. I can't certify that that strap and anchor in is all black rights and engineer. So I work closely with the Alamo County Building Official that before you get a building permit, we talk in forward language, all those rules and that we're clear on the expectations of where exactly this is. Lastly, there are some exemptions in there for existing structures in the floodplain. That is a lot of our authority. South Florida lost a lot of historic buildings over the years. It used to be more building closer to river. The ones that we have now, we do care about for historic preservation. So this ordinance has some exemptions. If your building has survived two hundred years and you want to get insurance and try to renovate it, there is provision for you to do that. We don't want this ordinance to be a barrier to fixing up the old building, allowing that building to continue to live there or to attempt renovation. But by building a historic building in a flood like the college, it has taken water before. It may take water again, so flood insurance is how it does. That's what this does. You got to be a different question. That is here from the public. It's more flood protection, job number one.
Is there anything in here that's updated that would give us more power over things that might have flowed away from the CSX yard? Did you recall?
I don't think so.
Okay.
The 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 standard that we're going to use on that is what is an improvement? And what we've dealt with in the past is that CSX is temporary storage and the equipment is not an improvement. It's not something that you should get a building permit for. So their, their claim in the past has been that their temporary storage is not an improvement to the land. The case that we might bring would be it's big enough, it's heavy enough, it's been there long enough that it does rise to the level of improvement. But that definition doesn't change between the two. So I wouldn't say that our case is different than it was five years ago.
Okay.
The one thing I would add to that is it may not necessarily change the case, but you might remember from the conversations that they claim exemption for. Uh, they claim exemption from many of our local ordinances because of the Federal Railroad Act. And say that that piece of federal legislation exceeds all of our local stuff.
Jim O'Neal would love this profession.
He would, but having a local floodplain ordinance that mirrors the federal recommendation and relies on that FEMA. Can only help because that's, that's the heaviest piece of federal ordinance that we're going to be leading on in those conversations.
And then it would be FEMA saying, this is our best practice. And the railroad administration saying, but no, it was.
Thank you. So is there anyone in the public audience this evening that would like to speak to this item?
One question.
Come on up front.
One thing issued with the flood is rushing the water. The other issue with floods is what is the rushing water carrying?
Yeah.
In her case, you would be carrying logs that have fallen into the river. You know, the logs that have been cut down and let floating in the river, you know. And then perhaps a boat or two in the river, it'll rise and crash into something. How is that provided for besides, you know, it's okay to have something rushing to a building?
Um, the speed that that thing's moving matters. It's, it's a good question that, um. You've, you've seen on the bottom line here, in the middle of the river is moving really fast. And at the edge of the river is not moving so fast. So it changes.
Please. If the river's going around the bend, the river doesn't flow faster in the middle. The river flows faster on the inside corner of the bend. On the outside of the corner of the curve, the river flows shut. So. So being in the middle where the river doesn't matter. It's where the river is flowing the fastest. And I can prove this by looking at Pat and Ferry. Okay. And, and it's obvious that that's the case, that the river doesn't flow uniformly downstream. The other, the other issue is I've seen the Allegheny River margins rise up into the superstructure of bridges. And the water recedes and the bars is in the air, wailing at the superstructure. What provision is that? How does that have to be affected in Scotland? I don't know. But, you know, it is something that has to be considered is what happens to this debris? It gets logged into other trees, it might be monitor, it creates damage. Not necessarily to a building, but just getting a log jam on the side of the river. That's all I can say. I think it should be considered and I don't think your discussions have.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? If not, we'll close the public hearing and we'll turn it over to the council. Comments from the council? Hearing no comments from the council, I'll ask for a motion. Accept or deny?
I move that we accept the good half of the district amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
And is there any further discussion by council? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Yes, sir. Uh, Castle, boy.
Yes.
Thank you. Castle, hi.
Yes.
Thank you. Castle, monkey?
Yes.
Thank you. Castle, babe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. And now the last item, zoning text amendment on parking on Main Street. I will open the public hearing and ask Mr. Wallace once again to give us a brief synopsis of what this is all about.
This is a much shorter running of the best. In, in two lines and the general relations related to parking. The town has a waiver from our on-street parking requirements for the historic buildings on commercialized parcels of Valley Street. Those are old buildings, many of which fill their entire parcels. Uptown around the shopping center with commercial development, we have detailed provisions for how many parking spaces are needed for what kind of use. So for example, when the hydro fuel site plan comes in, there's a formula for the expected traffic going to that business. And how many parking spaces are needed for a gas station and a restaurant and the site plan will show that. It's impossible for a structure like the retail shops next door to provide that kind of parking because the building fills a lot. So it's the town's responsibility to provide sufficient public parking on-street or an off-street parking lots. We've heard feedback from investors interested in Main Street buildings that they're, they would like to see something similar. That buying a building like the old post office or the old bus station, they could imagine a restaurant in there with more seats in it. And it would be impossible to put enough on-street, off-street parking around the post office building. So they would expect to use the Main Street on-street spots and have that be sufficient. So the application simply applies the same parking standards to Main Street as we already have on Valley Street. That's expected to bring with it improved renovations, more activity in parking. And then you might add discussions like you had in the past for that, how do they sign this, how do they enforce or regulate parking? But planning commission's recommendation was in favor that inconsistent on the historic issued rules and supporting renovation of these old buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Now, any members of the public wish to speak to this? I will close the public hearing, turn it over to council for their comments. Anyone?
I, I just think this is a positive move for consistency across Main and Valley Street as well as for, um, you know, guy, people are trying to make use of these, uh, buildings in town.
Any other comments?
Is this going to create more parking and we anticipate more expense than signs for lines and stuff?
It doesn't. Yeah, there's, there are. There are vacant buildings now which don't create anybody for them. If they got fixed up, you would see more use of the on-street spaces on Main Street. I don't see those spaces as being all full right now, the block of Main Street around the post office. So public spaces at Canal Basin Square, those aren't as heavily used. So I, I think there's space on Main Street to support them for that. But yes, if, um, if we do the rules change and the buildings get renovated, yes, there would be more traffic and a bit more parking.
You could have known somebody.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, what they would do is allow, I think the example we, we brought up in work session was the old post office. Then, you know, it might have the square footage in the building to be a, a fifty-seat restaurant. Uh, but our, our current zoning regulations on Main Street would say if you're making a fifty-seat restaurant, these are the number of parking spaces that you allow. And it doesn't have that. And there are a number of different uses that would require certain parking. And because there's not a grandfather use in that space, it's likely not going to meet the parking requirements on a number of fewer uses. So the exemption would allow it to use the parking it has for any number of those uses. Saying as we have, you know, in the building right across the street, for instance, um, you can open a store or it was a cupcake bakery years ago. Um, and it didn't even create parking for a restaurant or a shop, a retail shop. Because of this exemption, it's a some bad streets. So it would be extended that same exemption to a portion of Main Street here.
Okay. Any other comments from council? If not, do I hear a motion to approve or deny?
I move to approve the zoning amendment for parking.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Unsworth?
Uh, Castle, boy.
Yes.
Thank you. Castle, honey?
Yes.
Thank you. Castle, monkey?
Yes.
Thank you. Castle, babe?
Yes.
Thank you. You will carry forward that.
Okay. Item D on our agenda this evening is two more public hearings to be scheduled in January. These will be public hearings for the special use permits for village residential cluster on Blenheim Road. Special use permit for visitor, village residential cluster on Bird Street.
Yes, sir. We have not advertised these yet, uh, but at your last month's work session when we were setting this public hearing, we decided to, uh, set those for your, uh, business meeting in January. Unfortunately, at the time when we had that discussion, we didn't point out the Martin Luther King Day holiday on January seventeenth. And motions were not made generally for the business meeting in January. They were made for January seventeenth. So before we advertise for an incorrect date, uh, the request here is a new motion to correct, uh, the request for advertisements that those public hearings be held on Tuesday, January eighteenth. We're expecting to meet that happen.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to have these two public hearings on the same evening of Tuesday, January eighteenth?
I move that we have both of these public hearings moved to the evening of January.
Is there a second?
I second.
And any further discussion?
Uh, just a quick question, Mr. Wallace, if you have heard anything from town council about. The conditions that are most likely to be viable for us to consider?
I'm not very much more discussion feedback on it. Um, I'm working with, um, this where I'm a graduate intern and facilitator Jeff Salter commissioned. On the extra community meeting requested, we'll have that on Saturday the fifteenth before this and we focus on that topic. But I'm happy to support research questions and brainstorming, um, from council or the public to think now and then to get ready.
Okay, yeah, let's do the, for the, of this public hearing, what we can basically expect to, you know, require or force and what we should.
Yeah.
Is that a thing that's going to have a good impact on?
And, and again, you, you aren't under the time constraint that planning permission was to make this decision at that January meeting. That could be a public hearing, a further conversation, uh, at future meetings for that conditions if maybe.
Yeah, I'd just like to see if we can get.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah.
It would also be helpful on, on that same note to get clarification about that before we put things out for public comment. Cause if we are going to move forward with having community members rank order thing, their preferences, as Stuart has suggested, which I think is a good idea for our own feedback. I don't want.
Some that works.
The rank order stuff, that's not feasible because I think that are actionable. Very good.
We're going to check the valley and property.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that we scheduled these public hearings. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you. Now, the ordinance moving the elections to November is, and that, that this requires a public hearing also, does it? And can we have that public hearing on the same night? Or should?
You can run this one down if you'd like.
We can do this one now? Okay. Why don't you explain it to the folks here and see if anybody has any comments? Yeah.
Yeah. The town's elections historically have been held in May. This has been true for as far back as I can see any votes. And the town, uh, held a charter update discussion just a couple of years ago, um, where council debated this great matter and chose to keep the May elections. Unfortunately, the general assembly passed a bill, um, out of the senate that required that all city and town elections be held in November instead of in May statewide. And further required that we look at this, um, and act this with local legislation. So we get back up with our order registrar about that. The abnormal and provisional order registrars have requested our position on this. Um, so this ordinance matches, uh, one that has come out of here and off here and applying to state law. Not every locality has done this yet, so I, I don't suppose it has to be done now. But this is the pattern of recent action in our state.
Okay. So. Refresh my weak memory to have, I opened the public hearing. Okay, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak to this? Something we're forced to do. I'll close the public hearing and entertain comments from the council.
Mr. Mayor, the, uh, this move was part of the. The citizens of Scottsville vote, Scottsville legislature along with every other vote. It's all the battle. It will not be a separate ballot. And also splits the vote into, um, Alomax. And now Scottsville District and whatever the district is a blue ballot. So it'll be on the blue ballot ballots too, so they'll set up a separate ballot, so the run of that thing. Um, not even why they would get one, but, um. See, see like, you know. If I ain't broke no pictures, then it wasn't broke. But I would be forced to do this.
Exactly.
But, yeah, I'm, I'm a guest of, uh. That's what we do about.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I mean, the discussion last week about what was going on in Danville and everything just kind of proves that. Like it or not, the general, general assembly is the general assembly. I think if we don't approve it, we're just opening ourselves up to have legitimacy of our decisions and legality and everything questioned by somebody who doesn't like a decision like we made.
Right. Any other comments?
Yes, I think the, uh, moving forward with the ordinance and not changing our charter is the preferred way to go. It seemed as a consensus last time as well, as a more streamlined way to, to achieve this.
Thank you.
So the, if the action is done under some duress. When you might express that as a sense of the council as well, and if there's an opportunity to change this well back to the way it was, we could attempt to do that.
All right. If somebody liked to make a motion that encompasses the fact that we are doing this under duress at the moment, we can. At the moment, we can change it back, we will. Okay.
A field vote, sure.
That's all right. Is there a second to that long motion?
I second.
And, uh, any other comment from the council? We, we need a, a roll call vote for this one?
Yes, sir. Uh, Castle, boy.
Yes.
Castle, hi.
Yes.
Castle, monster?
Under duress, yes.
Thank you. Noted. Uh, Castle, babe?
A field is direct.
Yeah. Thank you very much. The motion will carry. Or the non-under duress.
All right. Uh, staff reports, anything else we need to talk about from the staff tonight?
Um, yeah. We have our public service, you mentioned the public service recognition and the police society ceremony. Yeah. Coming up today on account of some, some health issues. But I want also to recognize the service, so, um, can't put a comment elsewhere.
Yeah, that was, that was next on my list here.
This is just Thomas's last day on the clock with us and, and he's, uh, he mentioned the one day. I've been happy as a public service. He has two, um, great things at the, um, Alomax County Government.
Yeah, we're going to really, uh, first of all, we really appreciate everything you've done for us, Thomas, because this is like the dynamic duo when it comes to finding money. Nobody knew that could be found somewhere. They've gotten more grants and, and funds funneled into the town than, uh, we could have ever expected. But we know, uh, everybody knows from personal experience when, uh, an opportunity comes along, you. You can take it or you can let it go on by. And, uh, I think Thomas, you know, he's, he's young and energetic and very knowledgeable and he can just go further and further in his field. So this is a, a good, good step up. And we will miss you, but you're always welcome to come back.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
So thank you again for all your service.
Thank you.
Um, I will also mention a couple of, uh, another thing. I don't know how many of you know Reverend Doran Lewis out at Chestnut Grove Baptist, but, uh, he's been there something like forty-three years now. And this coming Sunday will be his last sermon. He's actually going to retire this time, he says. So some of us, uh, are going out there Sunday to hear his final sermon. So some of us are going out there Sunday to hear his final sermon. So we want to recognize Reverend Lewis too for his forty-three years of serving the people of S. Martin Chestnut Grove Baptist Church. And next we have to go into a closed session for some personnel matters. And I just hope everybody has a really happy Christmas and a happy new year, and thanks, everybody. If we had more people like y'all who would like to participate in discussions and things that are going on with the with the town, it would it would be a lot better for everybody. But so everybody have a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and I will close the regular session. Yeah.
I got asked to serve, they don't call it the board, they call it like the Service Committee of the Ways and Rules Club. I'm now familiar with that. So what I'd like to do, maybe in the spring, when harvest market starts back, maybe once a month, get them involved with the table or some community activities. And then also I had a meeting last week with two more houses in the bar. We need to get them to our stage and sort of get some kind of events for them just to stay in. You remember, oh, five years ago, we had our first community day, you know, it was like a next week.
That was amazing. Yes, I was I was actually having events committee, running the community day. I like that community day. I have my notes.
I know, we've got it.
We got it. I think I have it.
Who's going to read this?
That is quite all right.
I saw where Stacy sent out an email saying Reverend Stratton's grandmother passed away. Yeah, that's who showed up for South Carolinas. She lives in South Carolina.
Oh, I looked at my emails today. I must have come after I looked at it.
It wasn't there this morning.
Okay, yeah, I must admit, oh, yeah, no.
I know that the council permission board on the closed meeting authorized in subsection A of Virginia Code Section two-two dash three-seven-one-one specifically the subsection two.
Sure.
Number one, discussion consideration or interviews of prospective candidates.
Okay.
Second to the motion.
I second.
All in favor?